We have a proclamation recognizing Pastor LaDell J. Atkins and Triumph Life Church. Councilwoman Clinton will be presenting the proclamation. If there are anybody here representing that organization, please come forward.
Yes. Gregory.
A proclamation needs to get out very far. Whereas Byham Life Church was established in 1995, and whereas Byham Life's vision statement is a place for people like you, and central conception as its vision to create and cultivate an environment where people from all walks of life can come together for the benefit of the community as a whole, and whereas the church's mission and vision has been seen to stand under the leadership of Pastor LaDell J. Atkins, who has ran it for council since 2005, and whereas Pastor Atkins has inspired others to take a role in the community by serving as a mentor for gentlemen of distinction and a member of various organizations including the Interfaith Neighborhood Steering Committee and the Boys and Girls Conference Board, and whereas Byham Life Church Without Wall is a concept, is inspired by his outreach effort, which includes Word of Wisdom Cloud, Senior Outreach, at the annual spring and summer carnivals, Church Without Wall Concert in the Park, Harvest Festival, serving as a registered financial peace university site for the county, chief partner of Colonial Christian Academy, and coordinate with the city for the annual national night out Baptist School Block party, tree lighting ceremonies, police chastity program, and emergency services for the secret storm Sandy. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council members of the city of Asbury Park be hereby acknowledged and thanked Pastor LaDell J. Atkins and the Triumph Life Church for their many contributions to the community. It would be furthermore resolved that the mayor and council be hereby congratulate Triumph Life Church on its 20th church anniversary and Pastor Atkins on his 10th pastoral anniversary during its 2010 celebration this year, and in so that council members and mayor of Asbury Park congratulate him.
Thank you. Gregory, if you want to say something, by all means, please do.
On behalf of Pastor LaDell J. Atkins and the entire church and our family, what we do, we don't do for the accolades, we do for the community. As Councilwoman Clinton said, our Harvest Festival, that's coming this Saturday from 12 to 4. Anyone that has children will have, I believe it's Langford Avenue, blocked off from 12 to 4. Have your children come out and enjoy a wonderful time. It's not about trick or treating, but it's about having your children safe. Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is the public participation. Can I have a motion?
Actually, there's one thing I forgot, I forgot to mention that I wanted to talk about. And a lot of you who are here every week, and Jim and Pam, and Mike, and Nancy, and Anita, and Robert, and Rita, and Jerry, and Joe, what we see here every week, you've heard us talk about a lot since we've been coming to office, the idea of reorganizing City Hall for economy and efficiency. And one of the things that, when we came into office, that was a focus for this council, was both open communication with the community, as well as spreading the benefits of development throughout the whole community. And what we've, the thing that, the structure that we've looked at is adding a position called the Director of Communications. And that position will be you trying to accomplish those two things. Trying to better communicate with not just the waterfront businesses or the Cookman Ave businesses, but with the civic organizations in town, with the seniors, nonprofits, housing authority schools, the board of education, the churches, the community. So there's a very holistic communication that's based in social media, that's based in traditional press releases, that's based in going even door to door and group to group. And that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is a focus on trying to get the business community and the development that's happening spread throughout the whole community. And we feel like that the Director of Communication would be in a position to do those things. So this position that we are creating as part of this reorganization for economy and efficiency is really ultimately about refocusing on the community, the business, and workforce development in a way that includes the whole community and is less restricting than just focusing on the business community. Obviously, the business community is included in that, but this would be a more holistic approach to our communication and workforce development initiatives in the city. I just wanted to add that in there because that's on the agenda tonight.
That's it?
Can I have a motion open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
All in favor?
Right.
All opposed? The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and, after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. I would like to note, there is three-minute time limit per speaker. When you please come up to the mic, state your name and home address for the record. If you don't give it, I'm going to ask for it again. We need this for the record.
Hello, I'm Betsy Olden. I founded the Asbury Ocean Beach Inn Bed and Breakfast in 2009. Right now, I live in Ocean Grove at 85 Mount Eber Way. I am here tonight to support Tom Gilmore as Director of Commerce and Economic Development. Let me be very clear, I am here voluntarily. No one asked me to speak. Tom's proven value to the city is indisputable. In a city where it is admittedly difficult to negotiate the system and obtain answers, Tom was our go-to guy when we were creating our business. When no one else had solutions, Tom provided them. When no one else could provide answers, Tom got them. In a call I made to Trenton to obtain B&amp;B legal guidelines, the person said, "Asbury Park does its own thing, but talk with Tom Gilmore. He gets things done." From concept to completion, Tom remained steadfast and helpful. My husband often commented on Tom's enthusiasm and proactive solution-driven attitude. Tom never said he didn't have time and always was available to help. His wisdom, dedication, and knowledge of the city made the creation of our business possible. Mayor Moore, City Council, you've stated justification of eliminating Tom's position, that you were pursuing a new direction. Assuming this new direction is sourced in what is in the best interest of the city, doesn't it make sense to keep a proven success like Tom in the Asbury Park City Government alive? Please consider this analogy. If a boat is carrying precious cargo, you don't intentionally sink it. Tom's efforts over the past 14 years are some of the main reasons Asbury Park is now a destination. You have mentioned budget and creating a new position, as Joe just said, the Director of Communications. I respectfully suggest you add this new position to support Tom in his position. Instead of dismissing Tom, it makes sense to not only keep him, but expand support of what he can do. Do you realize that under Tom's guidance, the UEZ program and funds grew at an annual compound rate of 25 percent? That impressive figure far exceeds a standard investment result. In closing, I ask the mayor and the council to think about the dire consequences of eliminating Tom Gilmore as Director of Commerce and Economic Development. What will the city lose if he is gone? Who will be our go-to guy? Tom's successful contributions, his consistent dedication, and his innovative vision should not be disposed of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tony Chambervich. I live in 205 Bendemere in Interlaken. And I wasn't going to speak. I'm here to support Tom also, but I just wanted to comment based on, Joe, what you said about what you wanted the communications director to be. Well, I'm also a member of the Asbury Park Rotary, and because of Tom and Tom's efforts and brings in speakers and things like that to the Rotary, I spent five months last year coaching the Asbury Park Little League Boys and Girls Baseball Team. I plan on doing it again. So when you make the comment that the Director of Commerce, you're making it sound like the Director of Commerce, commerce, is only pertains to business. While I totally disagree with you, through Tom's efforts, your boys and girls have got a lot of benefits from me and the folks that I bring in to help coach your kids.
Hi, I'm Richard Buckley. I'm the owner of Buckley Funeral Home on Second Avenue in Asbury Park, a business that's been in town for 65, six years, 66 years just the other day. I can't believe that Tom can end his career like this. This is, he's too valuable to this town. I've heard from people in my place, I've talked to everybody on the street, this man is invaluable. Please, keep him on. Keep him on in the capacity that he needs to be in, and we need him to be in. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Traudy Grandy. I'm owner of Grandy Financial Services.
I'm sorry, can you state your name again?
My name is Traudy Grandy, T-R-A-U-D-Y, Grandy. I'm owner of Grandy Financial Services. I'm also the president of the Rotary Club of Asbury Park, and I respectfully request to keep Tom Gilmore in his position. Director of Economic Development has shown over the years how Asbury Park grew, how it came back to life. I've been with the Rotary Club since 2007. I have lived here for many, many more years. I have seen Asbury Park at its worst, and I have seen it come back to life, and a lot of that is due to Tom Gilmore's efforts, his dedication, his bringing in new businesses. People are moving here. I mean, we all know how the town has grown and how it has prospered. So I respectfully request to keep on Tom Gilmore. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I have your address, please?
70 River Gateway in Long Branch. That's my home address. My business is in Oakhurst.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Grandy. On a personal note...
Your name, address, please.
Yes.
Name and address.
John Grandy, and I'm at 70 River Gateway in Long Branch. And that was my charming wife that spoke before me. And so I know Tom through my wife, and after Sandy came and did its damage, I went to Tom and I asked him if he would support me in doing a fundraiser for the Jersey Shore. And Mary Pat Christie was kind enough to be my co-chair. And I can tell you that we raised about a quarter of a million dollars, and without Tom's tireless care and help, that would not have happened. And at the time, Tom had, was going through some personal problems, and even with what he was dealing with, I could not believe that this man could have the energy to take care of all of the things he does here in Asbury Park for so many, and still devoted so much time to raise funds the way he did. I understand that Tom sold a home and moved here to Asbury Park to be closer to his position in To Asbury Park. And it's, I always thought there were two or three of him, maybe like twins or triplets, because wherever I went, whatever event I went to, Tom was there. It didn't matter if it was 6:30 in the morning at a race, a road race, or if it was 11 o'clock at night at a wine tasting, Tom was always there, always supporting and pushing Asbury Park. He's one of the finest men I know, and I think, I think you're making a mistake to let somebody like that go. He knows everybody, and he's the best cheerleader, I think, that Asbury Park will ever have. Thank you for your time.
I am Michael D. Fornino, and I came to this town in 1962.
Your address, please.
Excuse me?
Your address.
I live at 120 Full and Place Neptune, New Jersey. I was in business in Asbury Park for 52 years. We were here from 1962 to 2014. And I was here during the very good times prior to the riots, and I was here during the very bad times. I can remember Terry Reedy came here saying that he's talking to a fellow up north, "How you doing?" He said, "Oh, we got plenty of parking." Well, guess what? You come here Saturday night, you can find a parking place, you let me know. Okay? That didn't just happen. Thank Tom Gilmore. Tom Gilmore comes to Rotary every week, and you know what he does? He pitches what's going on in Asbury Park. He doesn't worry about himself. What's going on in Asbury Park? This is going on at the showroom. This one's going here. That's going there. All the stuff that he does is always about Asbury Park. It's not about Tom Gilmore. And in my opinion, people who are elected to council should be leaders. And leaders, he works for the town, doesn't he? Isn't it your job to get the employees to do what you want them to do? If you want, you want this changed, then have Tom do it. I can guarantee you that whatever Tom is given to do, he will do, and get it done, and get it done properly, and get it done to the satisfaction of everybody concerned. That's leadership. You guys are supposed to be leaders. What kind of leader is that? You punish success. Can anybody in this room say that Asbury Park is not better now than it was 15 years ago when he came here? Anybody here raised their hand? Isn't that interesting? Nobody raised their hand, did they? Not one person. Not one person. That's how I judge success. You can't, you can't, I don't understand. This thing, you know, like Vortiere said, common sense is not too common. This has no common sense. It just makes absolutely no sense. I would like to hear the council give an explanation of what this is all about. The council mayor said, "Well, if you want Tom to..." If you want, if you want Tom, if you want Tom to branch out and do what you want to, give it to him. Let him do it. He'll get it done. Can you, can you point out anything that he was asked to do that he didn't do? I would ask the whole board up there. Can you, in good conscience?
Workforce development.
I'm telling you, this, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. I've never seen anything like this in my life. And, you know, I love this town. I was here for 52 years. A long time. Paid a lot of taxes. And that's another thing. He pays taxes here. You going to hire somebody from outside who doesn't pay taxes here? Dollars a dollar.
I don't really want to follow that. My name's Marshall Twynham. I live in the Post Building, 61 Madison. I worked in, how about an ad agency here in town, and I work now for another company here in town. We worked alongside physically and figuratively with Tom. He's always been very helpful. And since I've worked in headlines and slogans, I'm just going to ask this. If it ain't broke, why fix it? Thank you.
I do, actually. Patricia Gilmore, 1308 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Transparency, I voted for you. Thank you.
Hi, Joe Gillo, 521 Cookman Avenue. I think the reason why so many people are here in support of Tom Gilmore, and more so about how this came about, was the fact that most of the people here supported, and still support, the city council. And we want to see you do well for the city and for the residents. And we feel that the way this came about really came about without any explanation. And the explanations that were given were through the press, and they were kind of vague. Tom is somebody that, like most of us, you know, we like to ruffle feathers. And he's ruffled a lot of feathers. That's kind of what Asbury Park's about, and why we moved here. But I've never seen somebody so dedicated to the city. I've never seen somebody that, even though I may not have agreed with, you know, the way he did certain things, you can count countless businesses, both new and old, that he has a direct line to. And I know that, you know, if you look at it on paper, you're saving money by possibly creating two positions. One for what, $55,000, another one, I don't know. But the one thing that is not quantifiable are the 14 years of relationships that Tom has cultivated. Not only with businesses, not only with residents, but also banks, financial entities, potential investors. You can't quantify that. It's going to be a big, big problem when you have two new people coming into the town that are going to have to rebuild all those relationships that Tom had. And that's the main reason why I feel that you should put the brakes on this. Put the brakes on it, reconsider it. Give yourself 60 days to see how this exit, if there even should be an exit, how it should unfold. So, thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Dana Lancelotti, 2405 Village Green Court, Tom's River, New Jersey. I am the Director of Tourism and Business Development for Ocean County. I grew up in Monmouth County. I've worked in tourism and business development in the Jersey Shore region for many years. I've had the privilege and the honor of working with Tom Gilmore for many years. I can speak to something that maybe hasn't been mentioned here. Tom's impact reverberates far outside the city limits of Asbury Park. Not only will we hear over and over again of all the wonderful things he's done within the community here, but he is a partner and a highly respected member of the tourism and business communities throughout the state. He has worked alongside the tourism leaders and business leaders in Monmouth and Ocean County, and he is always present. And I've stood next to him alongside the tourism directors at the state and people all around the state as well. I cannot say enough how much he means to us, and how strong and true his impact is. And the fact that Tom is the face of Asbury Park to all of us. I grew up here. I know Asbury Park, and I know what Tom has done for Asbury Park, both personally and through my business relationship with him. And it is a tremendous mistake to remove him from his place here. Tom is a passionate and driven force for this community, for the tourism, for the business development here. He understands and respects and has a passion for the character, the culture, the musical heritage, and the people of this city, and you cannot replace that. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will change the course.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pam Lamberton, 514 Sixth Avenue. I'm so happy that you are appointing a city manager tonight. I didn't realize that was going to happen, so I still have something to say about the city manager and the city government. I was concerned that maybe you were going to be appointing a figurehead city manager and not a strong city manager, because we need somebody who is capable of running this city. You have to get back to the business of setting policy, then giving that policy to the city manager, and let him do it. I have offered twice to meet with you regarding our Faulkner Act form of government to explain a little bit, whatever my limited knowledge is, about how it runs. You haven't taken me up on that. Therefore, I've called our contact at Rutgers, Dr. Ernest Rioc, who is known statewide as the authority on Faulkner Act governments. And he is willing to come to Asbury Park and meet with you and explain to you how this form of government would work. Now that we have a city manager on board, he may think that's a great idea. I would encourage you to take advantage of it. There are nuances, and I think it would show good faith to the city residents and the state of New Jersey that, as a city council, you are acting responsibly and under the guidelines of the Faulkner Act. Going along with that, regarding the new city manager, one of his tasks has got to be to build his team. Everybody in this city knows that there are a few bad apples amongst the city employees. You need to be careful not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. If you're, if you're, I'm speaking on behalf of Tom, and I'm speaking on behalf of Rob McEwen. These are good workers in the city. They are department heads. They have responsibilities above and beyond normal city employees, but they may be getting a bad rap. And as a previous speaker mentioned, if you can back up a little bit here, let the city manager, the new city manager get established, and let him build his team. The other thing in my 16 sections has to do with the road diet. We thought there was going to be more conversation about the road diet. All we need is three votes to overturn that resolution that you passed of no support, and get support, and just have some dialogue. There's a lot of people in the city who want the road diet. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Gilmore. I live at 1308 Fifth Avenue. And then currently, I'm the Director of Economic Development for this great city. So, where to begin? There is so much going on in this city. It's just unbelievable. Last weekend, we had the Oktoberfest, we had a sidewalk sale, and we had our first harvest festival in Kennedy Park. Amazing. The city was packed. This weekend will be the last bonfire on the beach, Friday night, on the Fifth Avenue Beach. The Sunset Market is still open, Farmers Market on Main Street, because the weather was a little difficult this summer. There's amazing produce still available, so I encourage you to get out there. Friday night, there'll be a free screening of The Shining at the Paramount Theater. Also on Friday night, the high school's playing Keansburg in football, which starts at 6:00 PM. Ironically, there's a film at the showroom, All Things Must Pass, a great, great film about Tower Records. And as was mentioned earlier, that Triumph Life is having their harvest festival this weekend. Pretty amazing. As the mayor mentioned at the workshop meeting, we had over an additional 100,000 visitors come to our beach this summer. If you were there, you saw it. It was very visible. That happened by a lot of work, a lot of effort, over a long period of time. But our beach is there. We have constantly been voted in the top 10 beaches in the state of New Jersey many times. Prohibition Restaurant, which closed, is now reopened as a sports bar. And we have another new restaurant coming to the city on Fifth Avenue in the old Harrison location. So things are very good in the city, and I hope they continue. We have six businesses that are looking for space right now in a number of different locations. And hopefully, we have a new bank who is committed to coming to Asbury Park right now. So, I encourage you to come to the city this weekend and support our businesses. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Darrell Stroud. I am a resident of Ocean Township, twenty-eight Willow Drive. I grew up in Asbury Park, went to Asbury Park Middle School, and I've definitely seen a lot of changes over the last fourteen to fifteen years. I wasn't even going to speak this evening, but we just watched a gentleman that is supposed to be losing his job in two days get up here not to protect his job. He got up here to inform you about what's going on in the city of Asbury Park. Let me repeat that. He didn't get up here to protect his job. He got up here to tell you what was going on in Asbury Park. All right? This is a man of character. This is a man that you need in Asbury Park. I never thought I would drive through this town again after I moved from here. Okay, now I come here to go to Watermark. I go to Moonstruck, couple other bars around town. Never thought I'd step foot here again. But you've got a gentleman in his tenure of fourteen years that has pretty much helped rebuild Asbury Park, whether it has been through relationships, financial, you know, bringing financial resources to the city, whether it's attracting new business, attracting new residents. Tom has done it all. I'm moving back to Asbury Park. So, I mean, I know some of you, and Amy, I love you dearly, but, you know, I really think that you guys need to reconsider. I campaigned for you secretly from Ocean Township. I work in politics. I'm a political operative. I won't mention the party and all that, because that's not the time and pace, but you guys are great. You've got great potential. I mean, you're a great mayor and council, but I think on this decision, I think you guys are definitely wrong, and I think you need to reconsider. And hey, if you want to direct our communications, talk to Tom. Restructure his position. But this is a man you need to keep and play in Asbury Park, keep him on the payroll, and bring new ideas, and keep bringing new business, and keep bringing new residents, and have a better time for everybody. I mean, it just makes more sense. And the explanation that I'm hearing, honestly, I can't settle with it. It's not, it's not an explanation. It's not a real explanation. And you guys are all very respected, and I think you could offer a better, a better explanation as to why he should be fired in two days when the city has been rebuilt in the last fourteen years. And with all due respect, I heard someone saying workforce development. I mean, government does not create jobs. That's not, that's not for government to do. Government does not create jobs. But if you keep attracting businesses to Asbury Park, you can bet your ass there'll be plenty more. Hold on, don't start yet, please, man. Three minutes, three minutes, don't start yet.
You're in charge.
Council, my name is Dwayne Small. I live at thirteen oh four Madison Avenue. I know you do. Thank you very much. And what I'm hearing right now, and all of the people in here, the only thing I'm hearing is about business and about people making money. But guess what? All of this business that came back to Asbury Park, we still got the highest unemployment rate in the state of New Jersey. We still have the highest murder rate per capita of people in the state of New Jersey, mostly happening on the west side of town. The job of the Commerce Director is business and also workforce development. Go read the code. And you was an operative. Nice place to come and say that. And if, if we get all y'all out here right now like this to come and address this, council, we wouldn't have the problems we got in Asbury Park. We all got them problems over there. You know why? Because y'all come here and address it. But Asbury consists of this side of town too. Do y'all understand that tomorrow, a guy is about to come and start the Springwood Avenue Park, and he's coming from Ocean County, and the only employees he had that he says from Asbury Park are Hispanic? Asbury Park is predominantly African-American. CDBG funds is going to that project. Y'all can't allow this guy to come in here and discriminate. That's discrimination. Just to have Spanish workers on that site, no white, no white workers or no black workers? You can't do it. Listen, if we want to make Asbury better, everybody fight the issues that matter. What's the most important issue right now in this town? Our youth. The gangs are giving our youth more opportunity than the businesses are here. Why? But everybody want to come here and talk about Tom. When we set on that Charter Study Commission, we said we wanted change in this city. We knew that it had to be fat-trimmed from the city, and some people was going to be sad. But hey, it is what it is. I lost my job. But guess what? I kept my head up and kept it moving. I want to see all y'all here at the next meeting and address this issue. As a matter of fact, I want to see y'all tomorrow, come out there to that work site and see who working, and then go down the street, down the corner, and see young men standing in front of the store, cutting through villagers and getting trespassing charges in their own community. If you want to be an operative, be an operative for that. That's the problem in Asbury Park. We being discriminated against, okay? Don't come here and say you was an operative. Are you kidding me? Keep doing what y'all doing, John.
Hi, I'm Debbie Marini. I live at twenty-three Ocean Pathway in Ocean Grove, and we give out the big candy bars at Halloween, so now y'all know. I, I'm here today, I also didn't plan on speaking, but I have to tell you, you motivated me to get up, and I'm shaking out of my boots right now. But the whole reason, I also served on the board for the Jersey Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau with Tom. And prior to, I work at Diane Turtin and Asbury Park here, and prior to that, I worked for Sackman Enterprises. And every single grand opening that we ever did, every single project that we ever had, Tom was there. He was everywhere. And then I would go to the showroom, and Tom would be at the showroom, or I'd be either would, weeks probably where I saw Tom more than I saw my husband out in Ocean Grove, I mean, out in Asbury Park. So, I'm sure you have your reasons, and I'm positive that you, that they were well thought-out reasons. However, this alone should prove to you that whatever you're valuing on paper, whatever you're looking at as being completed or not completed on paper, he far surpasses in personality and presence and trust. We trust Tom. I trust Tom. I can never have that trust again with someone else who's put in charge of that. And I just think to remove such a staple is just really eating away and eroding away at what you've worked so hard to establish here. So, basically, what he does is impossible to quantify, and it's impossible to look at it in writing and say that that's not being fulfilled, because everything else that he gives his heart and soul out there. I'm horrible at paperwork, but I'm really good as a real estate agent, because I love to network. So, people took, Diane Turtin just said, "Come onboard then, and we'll take care of your paperwork for you." I would miserably fail as a real estate agent if they made me do all of my own paperwork. So, that's my strength, that's Tom's strength. If there's a role that you could call Ambassador of Asbury Park, put him in that, because he can't disappear. He just can't disappear. So, that's all I'm asking with respect.
Hi, Marilyn Schlossbach, thirteen twenty-one Second Avenue, Asbury Park. I wasn't going to speak, because I'm very emotional about this situation, and I don't get very emotional in this town. But I got married here ten years ago in June, of this coming June. I started my business here that same day. Tom Gilmore has been such a proponent of what I do for not only my business, and I honestly got up here out of a little anger, which I want to turn around, because Tom is the most positive person I've ever met in this city. But that gentleman attacked me and my business. I employ a hundred and fifty people in this city. I started a program in this city called the Kula Cafe. If it wasn't for Tom and his introduction of me to Interfaith neighbors, that workforce program wouldn't exist here in this city. There are a lot of business owners in this town that put their heart and soul into everything they do here. I moved here because of Tom Gilmore. I will move out of here not only because of Tom Gilmore, but something else that Joe brought up, the Board of Education in this city. If all of you people who are residents in this town don't come out for this election, not only will we lose the biggest positive proponent of this city, we will also lose the chance for our children to grow up, be strong, work hard, and get their own damn job. Because I will hire anybody who comes to me with a great work ethic and a strong backbone. And don't ever tell anybody that the businesses in this city wouldn't do that for this community.
I heard Tom say at the Board of Education meeting that he was married to the best kindergarten teacher in Asbury Park. No, in the whole state of New Jersey, he said. I thought that was pretty good, that he said that. I don't know too much about what's going on, but I do know I don't want another person replacing another person. Communications, one little mile, I'm sure Tom could do that. I, I just feel that you just keep creating a new job and getting rid of somebody. It's not the right way to go. First of all, there's a lot of people you can get rid of, and he's not one of them. But the other thing I wanted to talk about, Mr. Nuccio didn't give us any answers on the employee that was working outside of his job the other night, when we talked about Interfaith. He was doing the job for Interfaith during working hours.
We're still looking into that. He wasn't working, all right, outside of his job, but we're still looking into it.
What is there to look into? He was there all day.
There were a lot of things that had to be looked into, that were some of them that hadn't gotten together. I indicated that I would report back on it the next meeting.
Well, you won't be here after tonight, will you?
I'll still make sure we have a report.
Oh, okay. Make sure you have the report. The other thing I wanted to say was about the pilot programs. And I don't know if that's coming up tonight. It looks like it might be. But I want to address my question to Councilwoman Clayton. Did you know that the pilot programs do not pay school tax? Because I know you're very interested in school, including the children and the artwork and all that. We are cheating our children when we don't pay school tax. And that's what's going on with the pilot programs. That's got to end, because we are now a city that's well on its way. We're not depressed that Mr. Saxman can come in and get a pilot program, so he doesn't have to pay full taxes. Just look at five fifty Cookman Avenue and tell me how much taxes Mr. Saxman's paying on that building. Hardly anything, and it's not fair to all of us that pay taxes in this city. And you know, I always try to follow the money. I try not to get personal. But I think, Councilwoman Clayton, I think you should not be voting for a pilot program when you know it's cheating the children. The other thing is about the, Interfaith is on here for tonight. I don't know if this has changed. I got it the other day. Could you explain a little bit about that JAM program that they are proposing or they want to do in the city? And one more question I have. What happened to the Michaels Group? Does anybody know?
I'm going to be very short, because there's so many speakers. The JAM's program's too long to explain to you tonight. We'll explain to you at the next meeting, and we'll have Interfaith here if necessary. They're still looking to build the theater. Michaels Group is still going after round two of Sandy money to build the sixty-four units on Springwood Avenue. I believe that's going to be announced at the end of November. And that's it. And Rita, we'll get you that information, but there's so many people who want to speak here tonight, I think instead of going on longer with answers, I'd rather hear from the speakers. So, but we'll get you that information.
And let me just give one quick response about the pilots, because Rita, you know I voted no on the two pilots that have come in front of me. But, and you know I was at that mic complaining about the pilots and the schools, but I've said it publicly as a citizen and as a council member, I misinterpreted the pilots and the special assessments. The school board by statute receives full funding. It's just a matter of where that funding comes. So, in no way will our school board be short of money as a result of our special assessment or pilots. And I was mistaken on that as a citizen, and I just want to, and this is someone who's still voted against the pilots. I'm not supportive of them. But it's, the clarification there is that the school board by, by statute gets their money, always. It just matters who it's coming from. Is it coming from, you know, which side of taxpayers?
The pilot programs do not pay school tax. We get ninety-five, I know how it works. Ninety-five percent of the money is coming to the city.
Rita, Rita, again, we have a lot of speakers tonight, and your time's up.
Okay.
We'll get that back to you.
All right. Thank you.
Lori Ross, West Side Community Center, one fifteen DeWitt Avenue. Just as a follow-up to what Ms. Rita said, and Tony, I'm glad that you're going to make sure that we get that information. I was, at the last meeting on Monday, was told that no, CDBG funds were not used for materials for those properties. Well, I have a list where the city paid for concrete, asphalt, a truck, decking and plywood for the gazebo, stuff for the Third Avenue apron for Springwood Atkins, Third and Fourth. So, this is just a level of accountability. Again, I, as a former city employee, I don't know how I could expect to be paid on city time to do work somewhere else, whoever it is. And to me, that smells like it's illegal. There's no accountability with regards to that. Also, if you're using CDBG funds to buy the materials, and the city generates income for these employees utilizing those materials, it has to be counted as income received and reported in your capers. To what Mr. Gard said, based on the capers in 2014, I don't see a fifty-fifty split with regards to the individual doing the mercantile license and the CDBG program. So, hopefully, he'll have backup documentation, because I will certainly look to that. Again, there's a level of accountability. Also, with the CDBG funds, there's at least seventy thousand dollars paid for job training. Okay? So, there's a lot of money that's going out for job training, perhaps whoever it is, whether it's Mr. Gilmore, whether it's a Director of Communications, whether it's the city manager, whether it's Social Service, Community Relations. These things need to be communicated simply, hey, we created all these jobs based on that. But it really is, again, and I'll say it a thousand times, it is more, quicker, easier for a quirk out of this county to get major contracts than the young men and women in this town, particularly on the west side. I would love to get anybody interested in this room to do a job training program at the West Side Community Center, just come in. We have a facility, it can be used. But again, it is just disgusting that somebody that was fined a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice can walk in here, and I heard he wasn't even the lowest bidder, and get a contract for the city of Asbury Park with, again, visa fraud scheme? I don't care whether the people are green, they need to be legal. Okay? But again, I'm in a community where there's two different communities. Okay? I'm around young men and young women that are unemployed, underemployed, and don't give me that issue about people, the city's not an employment agent. Everybody. When the center got a grant last year in Ocean County, we hired twelve to fifteen Asbury Park residents, so hopefully, y'all can do a much better job.
Can we not, can we not refer to people as illegal? People are people. They're undocumented or documented. Let's not refer to people as illegal.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jerry Scrannell, Long Branch. You got that, Long Branch? Okay. I have to correct myself when I was talking about the hotel tax.
Excuse me, excuse me, Jerry. People, we have a little respect. Could you keep it down, or you could go outside, please? Whoever's talking, please? Thank you.
And we'll give you fifteen extra seconds.
Okay. When I was saying about the hotel tax, if you go on Airbnb, you may find at least a dozen homes that are advertised in Asbury Park on that list. And if they're going to run the house like a hotel, they, we should collect the hotel fee, just like we do from the Barclay. So, I recommend someone go on that site and find out how you can get connected. Maybe Fred can find out how we get in touch with Airbnb, so we can collect the money on it. Okay? I disagree with Jesse about that the government's not first, need to supply jobs. But the reason I say when you give a tax abatement or you give a pilot program, you do the trade-off, like you did the lake house, and you tried to do it with the dollar store. You want something, you got to give something back. And then they say, "Oh, we can't find residents to work in our store." Okay, that's okay. Then you... Okay, that's okay, then you encourage your workers to move into town, because people who make money in town should spend money in town. That's all. There just has to be a hook to get more people to spend money in town that live in town. And then Liberty Park, I'd like you to explain how we're going to sell that property, because there's a lot next to Rita's house, someone paid 100, I mean, $350,000 for a lot, 50 by 75. I know everybody wants to live by Rita, but that doesn't have a rote view of that lot. The parking lot does, and I think that probably worth a half a million dollars. And I don't think it should be sold cheap, and that's my suggestion. Can you tell me how we're selling that park, piece of the land?
I think you mean Kennedy Park?
Kennedy Park, I would say.
It was sold in 2009. It was a decision made by the council in 2009, there were stipulations where they had to put down $15,000 the first year, they had to put down $10,000 the second year. The potential buyer fulfilled all his stipulations. We've since looked at the same issue and said, what's at work? We've had it appraised, and the appraisal comes in close to what the gentleman's going to pay for it, and to get into litigation would just be wasting taxpayers' money.
I know, I think that's all too cheap. Thanks.
We thought so too, and that's why we had it appraised.
And just to your point, Jerry, and I think you know, but just to reiterate, I think you know the council takes workforce development very seriously. We voted no on pilots, we've voted no on pilots without a workforce development element due to the fact that Asbury Park has such high unemployment rates. We also have created a committee for the five-year tax abatements, requiring that you do some sort of, or at least advise us before you ask. So, I think you know the city is trying to take the stand.
I know you're trying hard.
If you're asking us for money, we're asking for workforce development.
No, it's down to Rita. Thank you.
That's right, I like that.
Hi, my name is Shanti Manjona. I wasn't planning on getting up and speaking, but, because I don't enjoy this, but I do think it's important to go on record that I'm here to support Tom Gilmore, along with so many other people in this room. Do I have to say my address? Is that 103 Abbott Avenue, Ocean Grove? Sorry? So, I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience coming into town. We moved here a year and a half ago to start a business, and we were looking for a community to open up our restaurant and to move into and become a part of for quite a long time. And the reason why Asbury Park made such an impact to us was because of the passion and because of the amazing, like, dedicated community that was all so excited to see this, you know, just the new, all the new businesses and everyone supporting each other. I didn't know, really know where to start, this is our first business, and I leaned, I looked at people like Tom Gilmore for direction and for information. He connected with us with so many different individuals, and he still does. We still, he is the person that I go to when I have a question. It's difficult for me to navigate through sometimes all of the different, you know, bureaucratic and, I don't know, just different processes. And he's someone that I know I'll always get a response from. And so, I just want, again, to go on record that I would like you to reconsider your decision to remove him, because we all count on him. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe Pepe, 510 Deal Lake Drive, and for a change, Asbury Park. Two things. The pilot program and these abatements. I keep hearing people saying that these people aren't paying their taxes, they're getting a tax break. I just have two questions for you. Can you explain how the pilot works and how much of the assessed amount of taxes that these homeowners are paying within the program, just like the people at VIVE, I guess, are probably sitting, you know, if any of them are here, probably confused with, I don't have to pay my taxes? That's great. But from what I understand, they're paying 100% of what their taxes would be, and there seems to be some confusion, as if the city's giving something away, and that these people aren't paying their fair share. And the second thing, there's nothing really that I could say about Tom that hasn't been said already tonight. I would just ask that, put the brakes on this maybe, and take a little bit of time to think about it. Be sure, because even, you know, sitting here through almost every council meeting, I've missed a few, we're getting rid of Tom, but we're going to replace that position more or less with two other positions. And when I do the math, it's 50-plus, I don't know what the second one is, but it doesn't seem like money's really the issue. But I've never seen the room this packed of people that passionate before. So, I would just ask yous to maybe reconsider, put the brakes on it, communicate a little bit more with the community on why you're doing away with this position, and why Tom couldn't, you know, step into this new role. And that's it. And like I said, the pilot program, if you could explain that, again, it'd be great.
Yeah, so, as someone who has voted against the pilot program, I'll explain it. The pilot program is set up in that the people in the new developments, let's say the VIVE, they pay 100% of their taxes, normal taxes. The way it's distributed is different. In a normal structure, 57% goes to the municipality, a chunk goes to the county, a chunk goes to the school boards. In the new structure, which is the pilot and the special assessment structure, the same amount goes to the city, so the city is receiving exactly the same amount of taxes. The remainder of the taxes goes to a special assessment for infrastructure within the waterfront. So, they're paying the full price, the special assessment is paying for infrastructure down there, and the city's still getting its full share. So, Joe was correct, those people are all paying their full taxes in this new program. The issue that I have with it is, I-STAR was on the hook for the infrastructure before we went to litigation. When we came out of litigation, I-STAR was off the hook, and now those taxpayers are actually paying what I think should be I-STAR's price. But the city has not given anything up in that sense. We are still receiving our full fair share, and they are paying, the taxpayers in those buildings are paying their fair share. It's just a matter, a chunk of it is going, instead of the county and other places, going to the infrastructure and the waterfront.
I'll talk to you, but I think I have it right. I could be wrong, but I spent a lot of time.
Hi, my name is Brett Morgan, I'm at 1214 and a half Sunset. I'm a business owner in town. I moved here in 2005 from Montclair, New Jersey, where I had a business up there. And let's just say that the environment to operate a business in Montclair is much different than Asbury. When I came here, in Montclair, I'll say that I was more of a nuisance, I ran a music club for a number of years, and really, the town drove me out of business there. I came here, and any crazy harebrained entrepreneurial idea, I'm a town, I've run, I started a company called Dance on a Budget in 2008 on Madison Avenue. We started a business called CoWorks on Madison Avenue, which we've moved to Lake House. And I also started Asbury Fresh. And really, these ideas just came from just things that were in my head, I was like, all right, let's see if we can get it done. And there's two people that really helped, I'd say Jackie Pappas and Tom Gilmore, I don't know if he's still over there. And really, Tom has been instrumental over the past couple of years for our business. CoWorks was just recently awarded a $240,000 grant from the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. Tom really helped us with that process, vouching from the city's perspective that we are a viable business, the state should invest in us. Our business model is, we bring young entrepreneurs to our space, we give them workspace, we bring them into town. We are, right now, we're in the process of expanding to about 8,500 square feet from 1,600 over two locations. We're going to employ probably about 10 people, we're going to bring about 25 tech companies into this town. And Tom is very, very valuable in that whole process. He's, like, I always joke that if you want to get something done, just send an email to Tom, like, he gets right back to you. He kind of tells you what you need to do, he makes suggestions, he's happy with introductions. So, again, like, I understand that things have to change in the city, but really, as Joe Grillo originally brought up, and it's been brought up several times, I urge the council just to put the brakes on it for maybe a 90-day period. Let the new city manager, who I welcome and I want to work with, please, just let him get acclimated, and then, and then make a decision. Because right now, it seems like very rushed. So, that's my two cents.
Tracy Rogers, 900 Blackman Row.
As you guys know, I'm new to the area, I've been coming to all the council meetings since I got here. And to compassion, I see two issues that really need to be addressed. One, to see so many people come out, that you need to evaluate some of the decisions that you're making and the communication you're making with the community. So, if these people feel this impassioned, let's look at what you're doing and take analysis, and maybe even come up with solutions that we could have fixed this before it even got to this point. And number two, one of the other issues is workforce, which I see, you have one of the highest unemployments in this city, I mean, the state. And if we need to sit down and come up with a solution or a community commitment, and I see people here ready to do this, and I'll be the first one, we could put a committee together and figure out how we can get jobs, how to make this city the best city, because I moved here and I'm enjoying it. So, let's all come together and fix these problems, instead of getting to this point where we have to come up and talk about things, instead of sobbing before we get to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Warren Hall, I'm the owner of 1114 Asbury Avenue. I am so excited for the passion. And I'm overwhelmed, I almost cried when this sister over there began to cry about her friend Tom. I've known Tom for a very long time. I've known Tom since Tony Nutcio had black hair. There's a young man who has been raised up, born on Asbury Avenue, at 1114 Asbury Avenue, who went through the school system, who went to school, who's come back into the community, he's been on the school board, and all he's done while people apply the common sense that seems like it's not common sense, and do the things that they feel is rational or not rational. And all the while, what he does is like a balancing act in between the two sides. You want to concentrate on this, and you want to concentrate on that, and I want to focus on the children. I want vocational training, I want safety programs, I want the murders to stop on the street. When he came on the board, kids were killing themselves and each other in broad daylight in front of the schools. The blood of the children was speaking. Now, he has introduced things like CPR and swimming and lifeguard training, and now he wants to bring in CNAs and the ROTC program, you name it, this kid has been moving, you've never seen so much progress in over 30 years that he's done in three years. So, I, and I really applaud the young lady, because she was so passionate about people coming out for the school board election. But let's not make the mistake of, hmm, the baby, he's the youngest one ever to be elected to the school board, 27 years old. And he could be doing other things, raising hell somewhere about nothing, or he could accept the torch Mr. Chaney passed on to him, and we could support him, and he can keep doing the things that we need for this city. The same logic that goes into taking someone who seems to be doing what he's supposed to be doing and removing him, would have to be the same logic that the folks who would be passionate about coming out to the school board election would elect somebody else be elected other than Christian Hall. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Hockenjos, 1110 Fifth Avenue. I actually just moved to Asbury Park, and about a year ago, I really wanted to get more involved in the city, I've been playing music here for a long time. And I was volunteering with the Asbury Park Musical Heritage Foundation, and Tom recognized some strengths that I had, and he gave me the opportunity to help him put a proposal together based on an idea he had for a big film festival. And we were able to do that last year. Created a really great film festival for the city, brought about 5,000 people into the city. And we're taking that to a new level this year, we're expecting triple the audience. And that was Tom's idea to do that. And since then, I've been appointed the Executive Director of the Asbury Park Music Foundation, and I owe a tremendous amount of respect to Tom for always having my back and always supporting me through that. And like I said, since then, I bought a house and now I'm a resident here. Tom always encourages me to go out in town, he's always asking me to support local business, whether it be going to see a movie at the showroom or go grab a light to eat, just because he wants to have his face out in town and see people and introduce me to people. So, and there's just so many great things, having him in the city and being able to lean on him and ask him for questions, you know, ask him questions about what I should do in certain situations, and be able to create opportunities for the kids in Asbury Park, be able to create opportunities for the elderly of Asbury Park. We're launching a new summer concert series on the West Side, thanks to Tom, next summer. And I think not having him here is detrimental to that as well, not only for the city, but for the musical heritage founded, the music foundation and on many other levels. So, I think it's a big mistake. Thank you.
Jeffrey Seads, Third Avenue. This council meeting is being taped by AP-TV, which is Channel 30 or Channel 77 on your television, depending on whether you have Verizon or Cablevision. And I want to tell you two things, because the school board elections come up several times tonight. You can see the forum that was held in this council chamber last Thursday. There was a sort of a debate of the six people running for council. And we also taped individual interviews with the people running for school board, and that's all running on a loop on AP-TV from noon till midnight through Election Day, which is next Tuesday. And the other thing I want to talk about AP-TV is that we're having an event in this council chambers next Thursday. It's called the Volunteer Recruitment Showcase. And if you come out, we will show you what AP-TV is doing, and we're trying to recruit people to become volunteers. Because the difference between us just doing council meetings and a few other things like that, and doing many, many more programs, so that the AP-TV would be filled up 24/7 with programming about Asbury Park, is the number of volunteers that we can attract. So, I encourage, if you know, if you yourself are interested, either already have video or editing skills, or if you know of anybody who does, we are trying to attract volunteers so that we can expand AP-TV. Thank you.
Lee Perry, see veterans of Fire and War of Asbury Park. It occasioned the greatest celebration that the world had ever known, and it happened 79 years ago. The 11th hour, the 11th day, the 11th month of the year. And the cause for that celebration was well-recognized, the end of World War I. By the time the war was over, 25 million people were killed. The United States, the AEF, the American Expeditionary Force, actually saw action on the trenches for only five months. But in those five months, they sustained losses of 126,000 dead. Now, for many years, of course, that November the 11th was celebrated as Armistice Day, but after World War II, it seemed rather ironic to celebrate a peace that was followed by World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Two Gulf Wars in Afghanistan. And so, that day was designed as Veterans Day, that one day of the year in which we pay tribute to those millions of veterans who wore the uniform in peace and in war to defend the liberties which we all have. Read the paper today and look at television, and you'll see tens of thousands of people fleeing their homes. And for one reason, for that life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness that all of us have. And we have it because 24 generations of Americans took the courage to bear the uniform and give us those liberties that, so that we can all live in the land of the free and the home of the brave. The veterans are sponsoring this year, as in the past, a Veterans Day ceremony on Wednesday, the November the 11th, at the Veterans Memorial Park. We encourage all of you that are free to attend that ceremony at 10 o'clock, it'll only last a half hour, but that half hour will show the rest of the community and our city leaders that we appreciate those sacrifices made. And before I leave, I've heard so many tributes, so many deserved tributes to Tom Gilmore, I must say that for the veterans and for myself, whenever we had occasion to ask his help... help in fundraising or for any other purpose, Tom was not only willing but eager to support us. And for that, I want to publicly thank him. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Josh Ballard. I live at 510 Second Avenue. I own and operate a very small nonprofit, an arts-based nonprofit called Artists for Change in Asbury Park. And we've been running events in this city for a few years now. And as someone who's helped to run and facilitate events around the entire country, I've never been met with such excitement and thoughtful helpfulness as I have the few times I've met with Tom Gilmore. And I want to keep it brief because we've heard from a lot of people who've said a lot of the same things, as true as they are, but I'd like to ask to make a motion that you rescind the letter of termination to Tom Gilmore. Thank you.
All right, can I have a corner? All right, a quickie, last but not least, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I have been here 37 years. And this is probably one of the most passionate council meetings that I have ever seen in all of that time. There were maybe one or two others that were slightly below the level here, but I think this is really encouraging. Asbury Park can be great again. Take all this passion and channel it into the right place and this place will be the best city in the United States. Greetings to our new city manager. I say that as the founder of the Historical Society, as the first ever appointed city historian, and as the current acting president of the Asbury Park Library Board. Welcome. And I hope that you don't go running for the door after all of this. All right, thank you.
I know. Reading Devon, I'll make it very short. Delay court. Tom, I don't know what this is all about, but I wish you the best, no matter how it works out. And you certainly have kept everybody busy with activities, that's for sure. I just wanted to ask about the professionals that are coming under review. It's mentioned in the agenda that there's going to be a list of professionals that you're going to consider. Will the public get a chance to see that list? I'll keep going with the questions, okay? Okay. I am very glad to hear that Michael Capabianco, did I say that right? Is going to be looking at the, how we can change our rating under the flood insurance. I brought this up to the last council several years ago. One of the things that was a problem that was keeping us from meeting the criteria was a lack of an emergency management plan. So that's, that's one of the things that I, that we're going to have to check off on our list. As far as the professionals, the attorneys that are going to be reviewed, I just want to remind everybody that it's, it's not just what the attorneys charge us, but it's also what they cost us. When they don't step in when we're about to make a bad deal or a bad decision, when they see an opportunity for us to say, hey, wait a minute, if you want, if you want this price for that property, you're going to have to give us that, which is what you were talking about earlier. But what I'm saying is I'd like to see the professionals speak up because they should be watching out for our best interests, not just coming through when there's litigation. And sometimes the, the things that they work out, the contracts that they let us get involved in have built in weaknesses or, but we end up with more litigation, which just means higher and higher fees to, to pay the litigators. And I know Amy, you're, you're a lawyer up there, so just ignore what I just said. But, oh, there's no, there's no streetlights on Seventh Avenue, west of Kingsley, the west side of Kingsley, so that when you go to pay for the parking meter there, it's pitch black and there's no lights until you get up to Webb. And I think that's enough for tonight anyway. Thank you.
I think the answer is.
Oh, yeah, right. The answer is.
I think your question was, when are we going to announce what jobs we're going to RFP?
No, the list of the professionals.
Professionals will be RFP, I think that's your question? That would be just.
Well, I thought, I thought it was a list of people that you were going to consider, that you're considering.
Well.
I thought that's what it said in here, in the agenda.
We look at, well, we have the option to RFP for all the professionals or some of the professionals. So that decision hasn't been made yet. It'll be made at the next meeting.
No, my question was, they said there was a list of people that you're considering.
No, because we can't consider anybody until we put out RFPs, requests for proposals, be it for the city attorney, be it for the labor attorney, be it for the auditor, to anybody. So right now, what we have is what we had that was hired in January 2015. If we're going to switch, we'll put out the RFPs in November of 2014 to start in January of 2016. So right now, no, we're not looking at anybody now. At the next meeting, we'll probably decide which positions we're going to RFP and which positions we will not.
I think the list that Maureen is talking about, council, it asks for a list of your current professionals.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't understand that that was the case.
Okay, anybody on the list he's talking about, then I guess it's current. I don't know what list you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Whoever we have, all right, whatever professionals that we're contracted with now.
How you doing? Juan O'Grady, 610 CULR Ave., Asbury Park. I also wasn't going to speak tonight, but I was so emotionally moved in support of Tom over there. I used to work for Tom when I first moved here a little more than three years ago. Right now, I currently work at Lake House Music Academy as the general manager, but when I first moved here, I worked for Tom. And I got to say, can you imagine anybody who can surpass Tom in his position? Like, when you think about Tom, he is the job. You know, a lot of, a lot of people might not know, Tom also runs a 501(c)(3) where music lives, Asbury Park Music Foundation, that supports bringing music to kids in the community. You know, all the work he does around, you know, like you said, everyone, he's been in every event. He helps kids in the community. He is the job. If you can imagine, find someone better, I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't even think of anybody who could be better than Tom Gilmore. I support Tom Gilmore. That's all I want to say.
Ball opposed? All right, our next, order of business is acceptance of minutes. We have three sets of minutes tonight. October 7, 2015 workshop, workshop session. October 8, 2015 executive session. And October 8, 2015 regular session. Does any of those minutes need to be singled out?
No.
Have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is consent items, consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on a consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. Can we please carry a conversation outside? We still have a meeting that we need to continue with. These matters are considered to be routine in nature and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to the particular item or items, then the item or items shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The items that are on tonight's consent agenda as follows. 2015 363, approving special events wedding applications as presented on October 26, 2015. Resolution 2015 364, resolution authorizing a payment payroll in an amount of $862,784.58. 2015 265, ratifying approval catering permit for House of Independence for the event on October 24th and 25th, 2015. 2015 366, approving petition to extend license premises for Bond Street Bar and Grill for an event on November 7, 2015. 2015 367, resolution authorizing participation in Section 1033 program for procurement of federal surplus property from the Department of Defense and delegating authority for local administration participation in program. You can remove that when I'm done. Resolution, mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, determining that the development of the project known as Turf Club will address the existing housing needs of the city of Asbury Park for home financing, block 803, lot 1 through 14. Resolution 20369, 2015 369, resolution of mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, determining that development of affordable housing at 147 Boardan Avenue, block 1101, lot 30, will address the existing housing need in the city of Asbury Park for home financing. 2015 370, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, determining that the development of affordable housing at 922 Madison Avenue, block 607, lot 4, will address an existing housing need in the city of Asbury for home financing. And the last one is Resolution 2015 371, resolution of mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, determining that, that the development of affordable housing at 1274 Washington Avenue, block 1403, lot 1, will address an existing housing need in the city of Asbury Park for home financing. Is there any resolutions that you wish to be removed from the consent agenda?
Remove 215, 2015 367.
All right, can I have a motion to approve Resolutions 315, 2015 363 through 2015 371, with the exception of Resolution 2015 367?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. We'll go back to Resolution 2015 367, resolution authorizing participation in Section 1033 program for procurement of federal surplus property from the Department of Defense and delegating authority for local administration of participation in a program.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just, my, my concern is just that we would have a policy in place, as we discussed on Monday, before we actually authorized the participation. Because we can authorize the participation and if we don't get a policy in place, then we don't have control of what happens as we move forward. So I would move to table it until we have a policy in place dictating how we.
I thought we agreed to change the language where they would come to us before they bought anything, instead of they buy a tank and we say, take it back 30 days later, which I agree with the gentleman, lady who said, a lot of cities have gotten in trouble with this. And we said, no, if you want a file cabinet, you want a computer, you want something like that, this is generic, we had no problem with. But if you want assault rifles, you want something like that, you have to get mayor and councils. That's my memory from Monday.
Right, that's what we said and we changed a little bit of the language, but I changed, but Tony's answer, Deputy Chief Solano's answer was, you should enact a policy to govern that. Is that correct?
The wording, the wording in the resolution, all right, is the standard wording, all right, that the federal government was asking for.
Well, we all didn't like that.
When we, a little bit of the wording was changed, all right, and even the deputy chief, as, as the councilman said, all right, recommended that what we do is look at a policy first, all right, and then I'd move to, I'd adopt it.
I have no problem with that. When did he say that? Was I absent?
Well, I, I don't know, did he say at first, he said?
Was he here?
Yeah.
He was here Monday?
Yeah.
I don't remember. I know, and he said that?
Yeah, he sat at the table, started capping out.
I know he said that, but I don't remember him saying that.
I remember him saying that we should put a policy in place, but I don't think he said before we adopt it.
I thought he said we were going to adopt it, but before he would order anything, he would come to council and get a decision.
That's my memory, but if you're saying he wants us to table, you got to move it.
Yeah, I would move the table.
Do you resent your motion to approve?
No, there's, there's a motion to table.
You did a motion to approve first.
Yes, but then a motion to table takes precedence over a motion.
All right, so you're making that motion, Mr. Warner?
Yes, motion to table until we have a policy in place.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, next is individual resolution, 2015 372, resolution authorizing appointment of a municipal manager and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement relating to their to.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or question? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 373, resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the state of New Jersey. You have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2015 374, resolution authorizing a payment of bills in the amount of $916,955.62. Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Question, hold on. Let me just give you the number I have to stay in on.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore, with your exception?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 375, resolution authorizing the purchase of 20 Optix Plex 9030 All-in-One computers for the police department. May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, we had questions about this Monday night, if this was coming out of the.
These are all desktops and they're all coming out of the bond.
They're all desktops and they're all coming out of the.
Coming out of the bond.
What are we doing with the old ones?
All right, the old ones, all right, will be, all right, some of them will be refurbished, the ones that we could refurbish, all right, others will, all right, go into, all right, the pool for, for sale.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2015 376, resolution authorizing finance to negotiate with vendor for vehicle maintenance repairs. Motion to, motion, please?
Move it.
This was a handout, right?
This was, yes.
Hold on, let me find it. Okay, hold on one second, please.
Can I have a second while he's looking?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, what, what is this? What does this do? I can read the title, but it says, you did this in 2014, did this in 2015, you got nobody. So is it, is that the expected results again?
Well, the local public contracts law allows the municipality, if it goes out to bid on two separate occasions and either has no bidders or the bids come in in excess of the budgeted amount and has rejected all of the bids accordingly, to then negotiate to derive the best price possible for the contracts. It doesn't require you to go back out to competitive bid for yet a third time. So this would have to be adopted by the council to authorize the finance department to negotiate to get the best price for these services, which is allowed, having gone out to bid twice and, and on both occasions, we had no bidders.
Which I thought, the business on Asbury Avenue, bidding, got the contract in past years and everybody was moaning and groaning, they were so high. So now I'm reading, nobody got the bid in the last two years, but I've been told by various departments, like, can you get us somebody else because we're under contract with this one company and they're like, you had your windshield wipers changed, they charged us $400. So do we have a contract or don't we have a contract with this company?
We did have a contract with them.
But says, but this says, but this says we don't in 2014, 2015. That's the reason why I read it, you know.
I have to go back to Tracy with this one.
A handout tonight.
This came from finance, so if there's questions, we can hold it to the next meeting.
Hold it and talk to Tracy about it.
Motion to table.
Second?
Second.
Second to table?
Yes.
Yes.
Ball in favor?
All right.
All right. Resolution 2015 377, resolution establishing a schedule of fees relating to recreational programs offered by and through the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015 378, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Resolution 2015-378, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, referring proposed amendments to the central business district redevelopment plan to city of Asbury Park Planning Board, and directing the planning board to take certain actions pursuant to NJSA 48:12A-7E. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-379, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, approving the submission of a subdivision to the planning board for the city-owned land. May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-380, resolution authorizing the agreement of charter of the Wesley Lake Commission. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? This was, I believe, an add-on resolution, 2015-381, which you should have at your diocese. Resolution, amending resolution 2015-323, approval of the Bradley Cove Open Space Project, authorization of the Asbury Parks financial participation in the project, authorizing of the signing and execution of all required documents, and indicates the readiness to proceed with the project in terms matching funds for application to the Monmouth County Municipal Open Space Grant Program for Acquisition Funds. May I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I'll just clarify, because we didn't talk about it on Monday, we added it. So we just had a couple of details that the county sent us back. They said you want to make sure your numbers match up right. We have another appraisal in there, so we're just updating numbers essentially, as per county's request.
Any other comments? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances. Fresh reading, introduction, amending and supplementing chapter, I'm sorry, subsection 28-1.5b, entitled Vital Statistics Fees of Section 28-1, entitled Administration of Chapter 28, entitled Health Regulations of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing will be scheduled for November 12, 2015. Ordinance 2015-43, amending and supplementing subsection 9-2.3, entitled Cat and Dog Licensing Fees of Section 9-2, entitled Licensing of Dogs of Chapter 9, entitled Animal Control of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing will be scheduled for November 12, 2015. Ordinance 2015-44, amending and supplementing section 6-3.4, entitled License Fees, maximum numbers of section 6-3, entitled Licencings of Chapter 6, entitled Alcohol Beverage Control of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Staying.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing will be scheduled for November 12, 2015. Ordinance 2015-45 has a separate title that was on your agendas tonight. The ordinance has been distributed to council. Ordinance number 2015-45, repealing section 2-20, entitled Department Commerce, and amending and supplementing section 2-22, Department Communications, of Chapter 2, Administration, and amending and supplementing Chapter 4, General Licenses of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Staying.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for November 12, 2015. Ordinance 2015-46 is also an add-on, this has also been provided to you at your desk, authorizing the city of Asbury Park to convey an easement over certain portions of the right-of-way area, airspace adjacent to the property located at 550 Cookman Avenue, block 3105, lot 4, further known as, formerly known as, block 117, lot 10.01. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for November 12, 2015. We're on to second reading, public hearing. Ordinance 2015-38, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, known as the city, providing the special emergency appropriations in amount not to exceed $75,000 for fund in preparation of master plan. Can I have a motion to open the ordinance 2015-38 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed?
Go ahead, Warner. All right, thanks. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I'm just curious about what this is specifically for. We just hired a new city planner, and now we're contracting, subcontracting this, contracting this out to a private firm to do the master plan update? Is that my understanding? So this won't be done in-house?
So the city planner is, to say, at the very least, a department of one, and overwhelmed with the development that's going on in the city. We have like seven or eight redevelopments. As you know, Warner, better than that.
Absolutely.
There's a lot going on.
There sure is.
And we could, there are municipalities that at times simply kind of do a rubber stamp of a master plan, kind of look at it, say, we like what we have, and kind of give it the stamp.
Okay.
Planning is something that's important to this council, and we think the master plan is a way to have an impact on the next five to 10 years, not just in, like, we're talking about the waterfront in Cookman, but on the whole city. And we think it's worth the time, energy, and resources to bring in someone that can actually run that process, and have some, not like 100 community meetings, but have some community meetings, and get input from all the stakeholders in the city, so that we have a master plan that represents the whole city.
Great, great. I'm glad of that, and I'm glad that that's on the record. Thank you.
Maureen Nevin, D. A. Court. So my question is, why is it a special emergency appropriation? Because from my understanding, master plans are on a cycle of, you know, every few years you have to do this. So, you know, it's not like it was unexpected. What's the rush?
Not that it was unexpected, but that we need to get working on it as soon as possible because we're, it needs to be done by, if I'm correct, it needs to be done by the end of 2016. So in order to, so again, it's a long, we want it to be a bit of a process, we don't want to just rubber stamp it. So in order to get going and get someone in here to be taking the lead on it, to have the community meetings, to have the writing, to have the public input, we wanted to have as much time as possible.
Are we paying a premium in some way for that?
We have not contracted yet for it. This is simply authorization to, the idea is to try to find grants that we can match, so that we can, you know, because there's some things out there that would match what we do. I don't know, it hasn't looked great yet, but we haven't done any of that yet. We're simply authorizing the funds, so then we can go out and try to contract.
So this isn't necessarily going to be the amount of the bond?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If anything, that's on the high side.
Right.
If anything, that number's way on the high side, but we didn't want it to come back a second time.
Hi, Rita Marana. I hate emergency appropriations, especially since you just passed the budget. Why didn't you put it in the budget? This is like the same thing that happened last year with the $1 million hospitalization that Rita wanted. Why would you have an emergency appropriation when you just passed the budget?
That was five years ago.
What?
That was five years ago.
I didn't forget.
I didn't forget either. And so, there's two things I...
There's no reason to have an emergency appropriation over that.
Except that the pace of government is a snail's pace. And in order for us to go through the, just this, for example, Rita, we have to go through a first reading and a second reading, and then we have to go through the process of getting somebody in, and then we have to go through the process of getting them at the speed, and then we have to go through the meetings, and the writing, and the public vetting of it. We don't have to necessarily do all those steps, but because transparency is important for this council, we want to do all those steps. And there's not a downside to the emergency appropriations, it just means that we needed it quicker than we anticipated.
Why didn't you put it in the budget? You just passed the budget, it's not even a month.
We didn't anticipate it.
We found out.
You what?
We found out. I apologize.
We should have got it in there.
And we're correcting it now. It said, wait until January, then start this process, but we'd be two months behind the loop.
Motion to close 2015-38 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2015-38?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2015-39, bond ordinance providing for various 2015 roadway and sewer improvements by the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, appropriating $3,903,170, therefore including grants in the amount of $903,170, and authorizing issuance of $2,850,000 bonds and notes for the city to finance part of the cost thereof. Can I have a motion to open 2015-39 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? No public comment? Can I have a motion to close 2015-39?
Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-39.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2015-40, an ordinance vacating Lake Court right-of-way, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to open ordinance 2015-40 to the public?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Any public comment?
Yep.
You're going so fast. Maureen Nevin, D. A. Court. So exactly where is this?
In the Springwood Avenue park site. It's a paper street.
Paper street.
It's a paper street, just exists on paper that we're vacating, so the park can be built.
Okay. I can't ask a question about the last one, I guess.
After the meeting. The last one had to do with, the last one had to do with the street program. Right, that was the one we talked about months ago, where we're going to start a 2015-16 street paving program, and this is just appropriating the money. And the money's there and in place, and we're not bonding. So if that helps you.
Yeah.
Motion to close...
But you can't ask.
2015-40.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-40.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, last one. 2015-41, ordinance vacating unnamed alley, south of Soul Avenue, right-of-way, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to open 2015-41 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
Any comments?
Read them.
There is, there is a small-eyed alleyway in the 700 block of Soul Avenue, all right...
Soul, in the 700 block?
The 700 block.
Yeah.
You've tested, all right, a million times, all right? It actually looks like a driveway going into the old park, or the parking lot for the former YMCA building.
Mm-hmm.
All right? It's actually city property, all right, that's probably, all right, as long as, well, it's probably from the distance from where you are to where I am. All right? Right now, it just runs right into the property of the former YMCA. All right? And we have the opportunity to sell that, all right, for $50,000.
And that's good news. That's good money.
It took, and I'm not blaming anybody, the past...
Yay, we're making money. That's a first.
It took the city 100 years to figure out we owned it. So it is good money, and it's nothing else anybody can use.
Motion to close 2015-41 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-41.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Unless there's any further comments, motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All.
All opposed? I have it.